Mr. Art Forn in the passing.
Why does it says Blake up there?
I help Wendy with the with the stuff.
Oh.
So if anybody wants to raise their hand or lower their hand, I can help Wendy do it.
Aren't you just him?
So we do have four commissioners on there, Wendy?
Carol, Chrissy, Don, and right over there is four.
Okay, you got five total, right?
We have four commissioners there, two here, that's six out of seven, that's pretty good.
Oh, I see, Don's there too.
Yeah. Okay, if everybody's ready, we will start this meeting at 6:04. First, we'll do a roll call. Chrissy?
Present.
Carol?
Present.
Dwight?
Present.
Don?
Yo.
Michael?
Present.
Josh? And Craig, present. Next thing on the list is an approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I motion to approve the agenda.
I second it.
I will second it.
Don already seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Next on the agenda is the approval of last meeting's minutes of May 11, 2022. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
I make a motion.
Yeah, I make a motion, we approve those minutes.
I second.
Don and Carol? All in favor?
Aye.
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 That has passed. Item number five. This is time for the announcements and public comment on items that are not on the agenda, meaning the one item on the agenda is regarding the California Theater, so this would be comments or public comment. Not about that. And you're allocated three minutes to speak, and I'm not going to read that whole big paragraph, so do we have any public comment? Peter?
Well, Mr. Chairman and members, I did want to let everybody know that tomorrow morning at 10:00 is the blessing of the Dunsmere Community Garden across the street. And one of the features in the community garden, thanks to a generous donor, is a black granite bench that is next to the waterfall in honor of Ann Powers, who is a long-serving member of this body and certainly beloved in our community, so I urge everybody, if they want to come to the blessing for another season of the gardens and to give the bench a pat for Ann Powers, thank you.
Very nice. Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Peter.
Do we have anybody else here for public comment on items not on this agenda? It doesn't look like it.
Not on Zoom.
All right, we will close item number five and we will go to number six. Number six is the public hearing for the landmark designation for the California Theater. What we're set here to do today is to further discuss the issue and to open this topic up for public comment. And what we're going to do first is turn this over to Blake for a staff report.
Excellent. Thank you, Chairperson K. So as you know, I am not Rico Tinsman, who you normally would see here. So City Council, at the last council meeting, did not authorize any further budget toward this item, therefore, we, contract city planner had exhausted that budget. So that's where I come into play, to introduce this article about the public hearing. So the background of it all, on February 17th, Dunsmere Live members, Tim Holt and Sandra Hood, presented to the City Council. They presented a petition, approximately 444 individuals signing this petition. You see the statement there on your staff report. So at that City Council meeting, they decided to send this item to the planning commission. So now this item, which the petition asked to designate the theater as a landmark, so that was what the petition was asking. Council felt it appropriate to pass that along to planning commission. Now, at that meeting, it wasn't necessarily decided exactly who was going to actually be the applicant. There was some discussion, but we can get into that later. So further, or continuing on, so the council moved it to this body. So at the last planning commission meeting, this body here, you guys discussed it. And there was a report done by the historic delegates, which are, I believe, to my understanding, Ms. Tumir and Mr. K, so Chrissy and Craig. So they provided a report as well that did, to my understanding, establish that the theater does qualify for landmark designation. Designation. There was a few articles that a few of the, that the two brought up that we can discuss as well. But those, but the gist that I got from the two delegates was that historic designation landmark or landmark designation does apply. The theater in question does satisfy the requirements that Rico as well pointed out to those members. So they also recommended that it do go on to a public hearing, which is the next step in the landmark designation process as specified in municipal code, Dunsmere Municipal Code. So now we are here actually to hold this public hearing, so it gives a chance for public members to discuss however they see fit. And according to Chairperson K, allocation of three minutes for whomever wants to speak. So we'll hold that public hearing in a moment, but just the basis of this staff report will be, after the public hearing closes, this planning commission can then deliberate, decide, discuss, and make some sort of action. I have spelled out some suggested motions and some options. These are just some of the options, of course. So some of them could be to recommend that the planning commission has found that there is sufficient cause for designation of landmark status and recommend to City Council that process. They could amend whatever motion or whatever decision by those historic delegates. Or they could just say, no, we actually disapprove that motion and send either of those things towards City Council, back to that body. There's also the, I do mention that, just want to throw out, one of my, one of the options is to determine the theater has historical significance, which it clearly does because it's already within the historic district. And that's spelled out there in the final bullet point in those options, where we publicly say that the theater definitely has historic significance, but additional landmark status is not a requirement and does do nothing further to the actual building itself. So with that, I believe that's the gist of the staff report. If there are any qualifying questions, be happy to answer them.
Okay, so the next part would be comments and questions by the planning commission. And I'm just going to steal the show for a second here because I did give this a lot of thought and tried to slice this up 50 different ways to see what we were really dealing with. And I made myself a few notes, so I'm going to read those and then I'll turn it over to the next commissioner that wants to ask questions or comment. My first, well, my first comment, Blake already stole my thunder, that Rico's not here because we've already exhausted the $500 budget that the council appropriated toward this issue. My next comment is that the whole confusing thing about this to me is that this whole, this whole motion is being pursued technically without the owner's consent. And so that, that makes this thing a little bit questionable to me. I know that they, that the petitioners have stated that this opens us up for possible grants, but my understanding is that these grants would only be available if we were able to gain some type of state or federal designation of a landmark. And it's even been stated that we're not actually ever going to get that. And then my next thought was, if we were to apply for a grant, who would be actually applying for the grant? And how do we get a grant without the real estate owner's participation? How do you go in onto a private property, real property, without the owner's consent with money to do work? That was another question I had. And Blake already made this point, but I put it in my notes that technically this designation wouldn't change anything that's not already in place as far as the theater exists in the historic district. And my last point, and this is probably more important than most of them, is if this was to go forward and this was passed and this was made a designated landmark, does this open up the city for certain liabilities and lawsuits? Because there isn't, there isn't the real estate owner working with the committee as far as I know as of right now. And the last note here is that no one has actually discussed any of this with the city attorney to find out if we are going to be open for certain liabilities and whatnot. Those are my notes.
Happy to address as you see fit.
Okay. Go for it. Unless you want to hear from other commissioners first.
Yeah, either way.
Yeah.
I don't know if other, if you want to second certain things and touch on certain points or if.
Yeah, those are just the points I wanted to make before the public hearing portion.
Yeah, and I can, yeah, as you see fit, however you'd like to run it.
And then, do any other commissioners have any comments or questions for Blake at this point?
I'd like to hear Blake's answers to your questions. I thought you had some good ones to start with, and I have some more comments after that.
Okay, all right, we'll let Blake, we'll let Blake comment on my comments.
Okay, so I think I got some of the items. So first off, the exhausted budget, yeah, that's definitely true, so we've exhausted that whole budget. So that does tie into the city attorney piece, where I have not reached out to city attorney, as that would cost additional dollars.
Right.
So it comes back to one point is, it really is who does want to be the applicant for this status? And according to our municipal code, it could be City Council, could be the planning commission, could be the property owner, or designated, or authorized designee, right?
Okay, define authorized designee.
Somebody that we would have authorization, some kind of signed document from the property owner to say, I authorize the whomever to apply on my behalf and provide the necessary funds and that sort of.
So as of right now, do we, do we, do we or do we not have an actual authorized designee?
There is no authorized designee to submit this application or propose this landmark designation.
Right.
Yeah, so in my eyes, as acting city manager, it would either have to be the planning commission or the City Council. So there's the budget piece. No owner consent, that is true at this point. I have been in discussions with the property owner, or I've been in discussions with Mark Juarez, who I guess is an agent of the owner, because it's Dunsmere LLC is the owner of record for that building. But I have been in discussions with Mark Juarez on it. But as of this moment, it's true, there is no owner consent, and if there were, then of course, that person would be in favor of designating landmark status and provide funds for it and do that sort of thing that would need to happen. So grants, this discussion at all does not pertain to any kind of granting. The city is not in charge of receiving grants for this particular building. We, the city is not able to, we could potentially partner on some things, but as of, as of this discussion right now, today, grants is not part of that discussion. This is simply essentially a public hearing to determine whether the theater building qualifies as a landmark building. So whether grants are allowed or not, that's not necessarily pertinent. Lawsuits, definitely potential, potential for lawsuits. I guess I can't say anything further than, than they very well could be. Property owner has every right to bring forth any kind of dispute, and that's another great reason to reach out to the city attorney to make sure that, you know, lawsuits are not happening, we don't put the city at liability. So if somebody is, you know, if the planning commission or the City Council, City Council has the full authority over budget. And luckily, there's no City Council members acting as City Council members, you know, today, right now, so. I just want to make a note, Mr. Art is in the audience, but he's here solely as a citizen, so not as a City Council member at all, so please don't, if you're in the planning commission, don't feel that Mr. Art can go back to the City Council with anything that is said here or anything like that. So, so that was the lawsuit piece. I think I picked up everything on that.
I think you hit everything.
And then, yes, oh, so the no change between landmark and historic district, that is 100% true. And then just one point further to that, within the designation procedures of the Dunsmere Municipal Code, it does state that there can be no detrimental harm placed onto the property owner when designating a landmark or a historic district, for that matter, right? So there is no additional benefits, there's no additional harm, there's no additional reporting requirements, anything like that. The theater, as of right now, must adhere to Municipal Code 17.28, and that's the same status as if it were a landmark as well.
Chrissy, did you want to make some comments now?
I do, thank you. So, okay, so the grant thing, I know I saw them in the minutes that came up, I must have said that a couple of times. So I just want to clarify, what I meant there was that, you know, it's just like with any grant out there, you're looking for the justification for getting resources allocated. And a lot of times with like the community foundation, or, you know, I can't think of another one at the moment, but I know there's grants out there that give money to historic buildings for, you know, events and revitalization efforts and things like that. And so what I was envisioning was it would be in partnership with the owner if there was a designation, which, you know, I'm also hearing that it's not much different than what is on the books already, and so I have some questions about that. But I think having this extra special designation puts it on the map, it gives it this status, it gets on lists, people that are, you know, into and interested in these old historic buildings, they become patrons of these buildings and things like that. So I'm thinking that it's an attractant, and it would be certainly, would never, you know, think to go for a grant without the owner's support, obviously, as the main applicant of that grant. But I would think as an owner that it would actually be a boon to have this designation and could help to attract more resources and potential investors into the building. So that's the impetus behind that, you know, comment about grants. Also, I think, Craig, you had said that we can't get state or federal status, so I'm wondering, Blake, if you could expound upon why we couldn't get state historic designation for this building? I was just curious if that is true, and if so, then what is the reasoning? And then, I know I had some more questions, but I think those are the big ones for now, and, yeah.
To clarify, okay, thank you. To clarify, I didn't, I didn't mean that there's no way we could get those designations. I had just heard that there was no intention to pursue those designations.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, and sorry, Chrissy, I can't necessarily determine whether federal or state designation of a landmark. I don't know anything about that sort of thing. I'd be happy to research at some point, but, you know, it's kind of under my understanding that an individual property owner would most likely be the one that would go forth with trying to get federal and state statuses.
Okay. I also want to note here, and now I'm trying to remember what 17.28 is. Is that the code, the, our historic, our municipal code, historic designation, historic district?
Yes, exactly.
17.28, okay. I remember my question then. Is it, is the building currently in compliance with all aspects of that code? Like, I know in Rico's last project report, or sorry, staff report, he had stated that we could ask for a report after the city enforcement officer did an inspection of the building to see if it's in working condition, if it's, you know, up to code in terms of safety. And so I was just curious, has there been an evaluation of the building's structural integrity or anything like that as part of this process or as just part of enforcement of the, of the current code?
Yeah, great, great questions all around. I can try and touch on some of these things. So building-wise, we have not done any structural building analysis, so like, in terms of if the foundation or so forth is up to snuff, we don't do that. That's not what necessarily the city does. We, if we get reports, a building inspector is able to go and inspect on certain things, but that's a little bit of a side note, necessarily pertinent to this discussion to a certain degree. I think I get where you're going at. But just for instance, 17.28.160 is the reasonable maintenance of historic structures. And so item E of that is vacant or abandoned historical structures shall be maintained in the same manner as occupied structures. So just generally speaking, people could potentially go around to the entire historic district and see some vacant or abandoned historical structures. And so it is a City Council mandated push as well, as well as city staff, their desire, to go forth and try and do some look through and adherence to this code. And so we have at the moment sent out letters to all the historic district property owners along these lines, to one notify them of 17.28 and all of those articles therein. So for instance, like 17.28.160. And so I just touched on that moment that we're trying to treat every, every building within the historic district under that same umbrella. And then maybe a slight aside, yeah, slight aside is then there's also, and I feel like this body should know as well, there is a vacant and distressed building ordinance, and that has no jurisdiction determining whether it's a historic district or not. There could be a vacant distressed building outside of the historic district that the city will move forward with, but just throwing that out there as well.
Okay, do any other commissioners have any questions or comments?
I know a question here on your options plan.
Can Harley hear you, Harley?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That was Dwight.
This is Dwight.
Oh.
In the options, it says approve, disapprove, or modify historic district delegates' recommendation. Can you explain that more?
Yeah, so my understanding is that the historic district delegates, so Craig and Chrissy, have recommended that the theater adheres to the requirements of a landmark status. And, and it's also very clear that it does that as it's already within a historic district. So it seems clear that both of those things would adhere, so it's pretty certain that it, that it does adhere to those landmark, you know, requirements.
That was a report that Chrissy did almost all by herself.
That's what I was confused at, whether it was that report or whether it was the the presentation of the proposal made by this group to the City Council in February.
No, it was.
And I didn't think we could modify their agreement in any way, that's why I was.
It was, it was Chrissy's.
Yeah, modifying the Chrissy's report, okay.
And you really would just modify whether you accept the report, what you'd like to modify, and/or disavow that report or not approve.
Next, anybody else? Comments or questions? Carol?
Yes. Do you have any comments, Michael? I'd let you go ahead.
Go ahead, Carol, I'll follow up.
Go ahead. You go ahead, fine, go ahead.
I need a moment to process. Go ahead, Carol.
Carol, you have the floor.
Thank you. Okay, I just want to take the whole show here. Um, I have some real doubts about what we're doing here. I know a public hearing is required because it's a request, and we're fulfilling that tonight. In the staff report that I, I got through my email, from the last public comment from Tim Holt with Dunsmere Live, states that the theater is the crown jewel of the historic district. It is not my crown jewel. It's not Tim's crown jewel. It's not any of us' crown jewel. We don't own it. It's private property. For the past many years, and first of all, I'd like to know, is the owner of the property here tonight? I can't see.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so for the past many years, I have spoken with Mark, other people have spoken with Mark about how we would like that theater to be up and going. I, as a private citizen, cannot make someone else, because I want it, do something with their property. I can't do that. We can't do that. We can say we're interested, we can do like we did at that party we had and say, look, we really want this. But in the end, we cannot force someone to do something they don't want to do with their personal property. Also, as Tim said in his comments, the landmark status does not provide any additional physical protections or place any additional requirements on the building's owner. And he explained that he, right here, it says, he had meetings with the property owner, explained to the owner what the goals were for the theater. That's pretty gutsy, because, you know, it's like someone coming to my house and saying, I have some suggestions and goals for your private property. There's no one more than me that wants that theater up and running. But I can't set goals for something that I'm not paying property taxes on. I can't set goals for that. And at the end, he indicated that this is bigger than the property owner. I beg to differ. And we can put ourselves at liability. At the very least, we should send this back to the City Council, because they're in charge of the budget, which is always slim. Why doesn't Dunsmere Live go get some investors? Why doesn't Dunsmere Live go get some investors and make an offer to Mark? Hey, Mark, that you can't refuse. You know? This is capitalistic country. We own property. And even if we, if I don't like down the street that something is not looking the way I want or use, using it the way I want, who am I? Who are we to say that owner has to do something? The also, the other thing, um, I don't believe firstly myself in forcing anybody, forcing anybody to do something they don't want to do. I feel uncomfortable with that. So up until now, we've had 400 people who want that theater more than anything. Yes, it would bring our town alive. But I want to tell you that I don't think we can make anybody do anything with their private property. And I find it possible liability. If, if Dunsmere Live wants to go get a pro bono lawyer, go after Mr. Warrens and say, hey, this is what I want. I really want this. Go ahead. But I am not in favor of spending city funds, which were basically shifting around to pay this and pay that, uh, for this theater. So we better think, yes, we really want a star. Yes, we do. But I am totally upset at the idea that we can force a private property owner to do something they don't want to do. And that's, I want to hold rest of my comments for, for after, if I have any more. Go ahead.
Okay.
Greg, I got something to say.
Go ahead, Don.
Well, I think that, you know, I see where Mark doesn't want to open that place up. And it's not falling apart. The only thing I could see that it really needs is the windows fixed that are upstairs, those little itty bitty windows. But what everybody really wants, I mean, he's not going to open the building up, but what people want to see in the town is the lights on. They want to see the lights on, on that there marquee board. Now, if we're going to work on, with Mark, why can't somebody work with him and get a grant that'll pay his electrical bill on that marquee light? And then we can keep it on 24/7. I think that would make everybody happy because that's what they want to see, I think. I, because you're not, even if he opened up the theater, people aren't going to go to the movies. It's not there no more. Movie houses are closing up. That's all I got to say.
Okay. Thank you, Don. Um, Michael, are you ready?
Yeah, I'll sure, I'll, I'll provide some comment. Um, I mean, I think that this, this was originally not an initiative of the city planning commission. It was an initiative of Dunsmere residents. You know, 440 plus signatures is, that's a significant piece of our population, you know? Probably a third or more, you know, on a good day. So it's, it's not really our initiative, you know, aside from how, what I think personally. You know, there, that's a good indicator that there's folks in the community that want, want to see this designation. Um, I definitely think that, uh, city attorney approval would be one step to, to ensure that we're not making a misstep, you know, legally. So I definitely support that piece, but, um, I mean, forcing private owners who own commercial buildings in the public sphere is, is sort of what we do, right? As the city council, these maintenance of historic structures, you know, uh, vacant or distressed building ordinances, that is what those do, those, those force individuals who do not want to take care of their, their commercial buildings or, or single family or residential buildings and to do something with it. So I think that that is, I mean, to push back a little bit, Carol, on your comment, I think that that is not, yeah, I think I disagree.
Well, Michael, you can say that, uh, the, you're, you're just assuming that, uh, it's out of code. It's.
Yeah.
There's nothing that's, I said that it's out of code. Where is that?
No, it's not necessarily out of code. I was just giving an example of how, how, you know, people, how private owners are for, are forced to do things that they don't like doing sometimes. But that doesn't mean that we should just let our city rot, you know? And why should we let this building rot? It's been 20 plus years, you know, the, the owner has kept this building closed up. It's, he's had quite an opportunity to do something with it, you know? And it's a business in our downtown, whether, you know, it's the gem or not, you know, we can debate that, but, um, it, I think it's significant, you know, that, that it's just, it's been such an eyesore, you know, because it hasn't been maintained, it hasn't been utilized. But I think this, this, um, this designation, what we're, it seems we're saying is it's not going to change things in a huge legal way, but it will provide, maybe provide a pathway that either this owner or future owners can pursue, uh, improvements and grants, opportunities, um, and attract interest, you know, to maintain, maintain our city overall. So, um, yeah, I'll just say those comments and let the, let the public continue.
I'd like to say something else.
Go ahead, Carol.
Because I can have 400 people tell me they don't like the color of my house. That means nothing. And I know the yearnings for this town, for that place. I've been here for at least 35 years. And I, I, and so, and so I can say that.
If you live in a certain neighborhood, you can only paint your house a certain color. So.
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is I can, no one, 400 people can't make me do something to my property just because they signed a petition. That's not the way it works in this country. And, 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 and if we don't like, we had, we put a, uh, a code in force for abandoned and distressed buildings. Those were homes. And, and it's worked. Very precise, that, that code. But again, I say, there's no one that wants it more open than me and looking great. But I cannot force someone to do that if they don't want to do it. And I can't even project, maybe a future owner would be excited because we did this landmark decision, which means absolutely nothing. Because it doesn't change really a thing. And I applaud everybody, all the 400 people that signed that petition. We have, we have to think what we're doing here. Not if, maybe, but, you know, uh, we're, we can't make someone do something with their private property just because we want them to.
So Chairperson, if I may just jump in real quick. So that the, the item at hand is really to determine whether the delegates, the historic delegates, their recommendation and to determine if the landmark applies for a landmark status. Um, so yeah, the city cannot dictate certain things, but, uh, the planning commission, the city council, or the property owner, or authorized designee is able to propose landmark status on a property within the city limits.
Any more comments or questions from the planning commission before we go to public comment? I'll take that as enough.
Yeah, I guess I'll just say something to you about the train house. You know, I worked really hard on trying to get that as a landmark. And the city had the 99 year lease on it and Southern Pacific owned it. And either one of them wanted it to go through. As far as I could get, at the same time, we were doing the ball field. And the ball field was already a state landmark, but we made it a city landmark so we could put on our maps through the, uh, chamber of commerce. But, uh, that's about all we can do. We can make it a city landmark. It's impossible to make it into a state landmark unless the owner signs to do it. You know, and he has to do the application himself. Cause I've been through this. We're just barking up an empty tree right now. It's just not going to happen. All right. Thanks. That's it.
Can I, can I ask a clarifying question, um, to Blake? You said, um, that the, the question on hand is that we're, we're basically either confirming or rejecting the findings that the building qualifies? But is there, uh, but then you, you had some suggested, uh, motions that kind of indicate it's upon us to decide, uh, what comes next for this, for this, um, request from the community, right?
I guess if I interpret your question, I would say, yeah, the planning commission can one decide if you guys want to be the proposers, which, which it does state, planning commission can propose landmark status on a building or even designate a historic, uh, district. As long, you know, there's a little separate procedures for a historic district. But landmark designation, yes, the planning commission is able to do it. City council is able to do it, right? You have to follow the, the proper procedures and do kind of what we're doing here, but it's a little more intense, which is what happened prior when the historic district was established. There was, uh, lots of research done. It was, it was well documented. We have the documentation about lots of the different buildings within the town. And so it was clear that there was historic significance in order to, uh, create 17 dot 28, which is to preserve the historic nature of whatever you want to preserve as its history. So, uh, right. So those are the, and then further that, a property owner, uh, potentially any single property owner within city limits can propose and, and pay the fees and everything, the required fees to designate their own place of landmark. Of course, they would have to go through and say, is my house, you know, built by somebody of historic significance and so forth and follow those procedures. But any single entity in this, in the city can propose their property to become a landmark or if they can gather a bunch of different properties together, a historic district.
Right.
And so from, from city council's point of view and my point of view, um, uh, in my view, there is, uh, it's not entirely clear to me if city council is the applicant. Cause it appeared from, from one of the council members that, um, that they, that they thought that, uh, it wasn't, that the city council was not going to be the applicant. It, it wasn't that. Now, other city council members did notice that 444 people, you know, made this request. And so that's what they took in, under consideration. And that's a product of this body, which you guys have done your due diligence to research and, and do the proper procedures for designation of landmark status. And now we are at this point now where it is a public hearing and the public is able to make their comments.
So I, I think I understand Chrissy's, uh, questions in that when we get done here tonight, are we telling the city council that we are or are not an applicant? And are we telling the city council or are we telling the city council that we're done with it? It's yours now? Or, I mean, it's, it's not real clear where, where we're going tonight and what we're deciding tonight and what, what happens going forward. I'm a little confused. I mean, that, that's why I started with my comments, because it's, I agree that, that the building itself qualifies as a landmark. And that was the findings of the historic, historical delegates, mostly Chrissy. She's, she, she did that very well. It definitely qualifies, but are we deciding whether or not that the city itself should go forward and apply for this landmark? Is it the planning commission? Is it the city council? Or is it Mark? Or is it a authorized designee? What are we doing?
Yeah. What are we doing?
Well, it looks like what we're doing is.
Yes, go ahead.
When we did the ball field, I made out the paperwork and the city council approved it.
Could I make a suggestion that we, because I think we have some questions that maybe the public comment might answer? And then we could continue, I think we'll be able to continue this discussion after the public comment. Is that correct?
I, I'm ready, I'm ready for public comment.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Let's, let's, let's.
Can I make one more comment before we move into that? If that's okay? Um, I just, I want to respond to my, Michael and Carol's, um, comments a little bit in that, um, I, I hear both of you and I understand the quandary we're all in. Um, I think that, um, as a, as a planning commissioner and as a trained planner, you know, I'm, I'm always trying to, uh, take the community's requests and input and their, their will into consideration. Um, and you have to balance that with the needs of the individual and the property owner. But I feel like the work that we're doing here as, as planning commissioners is very much about, you know, trying to, to help to preserve the community character, to, um, support, um, you know, economic development, to, uh, try to, you know, restore the historic districts to its, you know, um, luster. And so I, I just feel like it's important to really think about those 450 people that took the time and effort to give their, you know, uh, their input on this and, and take that into consideration. And with that, you know, I would, I guess I would ask the property owner that if we already have these ordinances in place, um, and there's really, in, in my mind, I don't see what the detrimental harm would be to, uh, establishing this. And it's a, it's a, it's a local, um, a local establishment. It's not a state or a federal. Um, it doesn't come with any additional requirements that I can see or understand, um, and what we've heard from all the staff reports and everything. Um, and so I just am really curious to hear from the owner, like what is the resistance to this? Because I would see it as a, like some folks have set a way to get more people to the community, a way to, um, have more potential, attract more investment and resources. So that, that's my question. And, uh, yeah, I appreciate having the ability to.
One more question, uh, one more question, Craig. And, and that is since Mark is, uh, the owner is in the, um, audience right now, uh, I would like to put out a question asking if he is in favor of this landmark proposal. That would be very.
Well, first of all, I'm not sure that we, is, is it proper for us to ask questions of these pit gentleman?
No, I, I'm just.
I guess, I don't know, because I have questions too, but I think possibly we.
Questions to the ether.
Yeah, yeah. We would like information, but, but the same token, before the public hearing, we can't ask questions that we specifically want answers to. And if we do, I have some, but I think it'd be better to wait. So I think you're looking at, the fact is that the original proposal on March 17th does state that it wants to respectfully petition the Dunsmere Planning Commission and the city council to preserve and maintain the California Theater. It does put the city and it does put the planning commission on notice that we are going to support this all the way through. It's not just that we urge the last line. We, I'd like to see they stricken out everything there and say, we urge the city to preserve the California Portale and make it a historic building.
I agree.
I think this has, we've already learned, we can't force maintenance. We can't do certain other things. So I think we're, we're, what we're, what we're agreeing to is much different than what was presented in, uh, in February. I was not there. I only could see the minutes of it. So if we were to ask questions, yeah. We keep talking about the 440 people that signed. I've been told that most people didn't understand that first part of it, that it was going to put the city and the, uh, planning commission on the mission to serve and to maintain the building. And I, when people found out about that, I think, and I've been told that many people have come back to the owner and requests said that they didn't really know all that when they signed it. So that would be, if we'd ask questions, it would be along those lines. I don't know if it's appropriate time to ask those questions.
Thank you.
Well, I say we open it up to public comment now and maybe we'll get a lot of questions answered. So, uh, I want to open up this part. Wendy, did we, I, I noticed that you had put in there that there was going to be a certain order. Do you have, like who, who's going first, who's going second, that type of thing?
Oh, for public comment?
Yeah, for the public comment portion.
For the public hearing.
For the public hearing? Yeah.
So ordinarily, if there was a huge crowd, I would do that, but...
Okay. All right. So, yeah, three minute cap. So who would like to go first? Blake, you have a timer? I got the timer, I got it. Looking for someone, Peter? Go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members, members of the public. I sought to have distributed in advance, and I know if you're on Zoom, you didn't get to look at articles that was passed out to the members here. But to me, the article makes the two points I want to make. I think I'm talking mostly to Chrissy as a planner, but the city of Berkeley has, in its downtown area, a now abandoned theater called the California Theater. And the council member, the Berkeley City Council that's responsible for the area around the California Theater, said that the area around the theater is very depressing, with its closed businesses and some businesses papered over. And so Berkeley has the luxury of a planning and development director, and the goal of the city of Berkeley is to have both housing and live performance space inside the California Theater. And the first step that the city of Berkeley took, and this is where, with all due respect, the notion that landmarking makes no difference, I would say is 100% incorrect. And here's the paragraph. "The theater's marquee and facade, a historic landmark designated by Berkeley's Landmark Preservation Commission, will survive, but the commission did not landmark the entire building, allowing for a developer to demolish the rest." So what we're doing tonight is not the last step, it is the first step. The city is going to work with the building owner, no lease, theater now closed. They are working with a developer who's going to do badly needed housing in the Bay Area. They are working with the California Theater Consortium, a Berkeley nonprofit that represents local art groups, for a 10,000 square foot multipurpose art center. They would host live theater, opera, music, dance, film festivals, and literary events. This is not a done deal, but we are negotiating with them. So I want to say landmarking makes all of the difference in the world. There will be no vertical blade sign to light up if it's not functional and if it's removed. Does it put an unreasonable burden on any building owner in the historic district to maintain historical features? No. When you bought the building, you knew. You've now been informed by letter, or at least reminded, that you need to keep your buildings in safe, good-looking. We're going to have a little film festival for Railroad Weekend. We're all interested to see what it's like, but the expectation is, it's not safe for human occupancy. So this has nothing to do with state landmarking, it has nothing to do with seeking grants, that all lies ahead. If there is no historic features on the California Theater, what difference does it make where it's located? So the idea is to clearly tell whoever owns the building that, with no disrespect to Carol, the public really sees building owners like me as stewards, and not absolute owners that can let the paint fall off, and the windows stay broken, and the theater be unsafe for human occupancy. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Who would like to go next?
If you could speak more directly into the mic, sir.
Yes, hello, my name is Jagan Madaris, I'm a new transplant to this area. The only reason we stopped at this area to begin with, and even knew anything about Dunsmere, was your guys' sign. Your guys' sign, you guys have all used it, and you guys have all benefited it. Do I have to wait for you to restart that? Sure? All right, you guys have all benefited from it, and he's paid the bills for it, the owner has paid the bills for it. Did you guys pay the electric? Did you guys pay the taxes? Did you guys pay anything? But now you guys want to take it from him, so you can, in turn, gain from it. And I understand the gain of a city, but does anybody on the committee, does anybody on the city council, does anybody have anything to gain from this? Because if they do, then that's kind of wrong. That was it, thank you.
Thank you. Tim?
Tim Holt. So leaving aside hypothetical lawsuits, even though landmark status, as has already been mentioned, imposes no additional requirements on the property owner, or forces him to do anything, leaving aside hypothetical grants that may be available sometime down the road, and leaving aside whether Mr. Juarez, or a corporation based in Wyoming, or King Tut owns the building, what you have before you is a question which can be easily answered yes or no. Is the California Theater the most, or one of the most architecturally and historically significant buildings in this town? I believe you have at least one affirmative vote on that, based on thorough research from Commissioner Chrissy Dohmier, if I'm pronouncing that correctly. And now it's up to the rest of the committee to make a decision, yea or nay. It's as simple as that. And let me just add, I think Peter didn't get a chance to mention that he's the one who made the motion that passed, I believe, four to one, to refer this whole thing to the planning commission. And you can correct me if I'm wrong here, but it was his understanding that it was the city council, in this case, who was making the application for landmark status. Thank you.
Mark?
Thank you. I am, I have a lot I want to say, and I really appreciate what all of you have said tremendously. I can't do it in three minutes. Is there a possibility I could have longer?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, great. Let me start. I'd like to start, and maybe this seems unconventional, with my first meeting with Mr. Peter Arth. I met him at, which is now known as the Wheelhouse, he just purchased it. We went for a walk, was our first meeting of potentially looking if there was a way to collaborate, up Sacramento Avenue. Peter Arth pointed out all these buildings that he just acquired. He said, I've acquired them. I acquired them by either making them a landmark, or by getting them condemned. In other case, the previous owner was unable to continue to own this property, because the cost of owning it now has gone up so high. So Peter generously took the property off their hands, at a very reduced price to what it was worth. This is what he explained to me. Now, I don't understand what his rationale was, because then he further explained, that's what he was going to do to me, and how he was going to acquire the theater and the Castle Rock. I don't know if this was a form of intimidation, because he's very good at that as an attorney, or where he was going with this. But that is an absolute violation of my constitutional rights. I, I recognize the petition was signed, 444 signatures, and thank you so much for your comment, because that was precisely the very comment I got, was all these people came to me, excited, hey, I signed that petition, I really want to help you open the theater. That was not, I believe, the reason for that petition. There was, in fact, a whole nother reason. And maybe I'm wrong, but Mr. Tim Holtz, who created Dunsmere Live, never came to me and said, can we help you open the theater? Thank you so much for what you said. As, as somebody that represents that theater, who desperately wants to get it open, I should have the right to be a part of some of the meetings. And I was never given that right. I was never invited to any of those meetings, until I found out through other sources that a meeting was taking place about the California Theater. And I then went to Tim and said, what's going on? Oh, well, here, let me give you an invitation.
That is incorrect, just for the record, that's a formally correct...
And there is, but going back to the petition, yes, rarely, nobody really did clearly understand, and I still don't, I've asked him several times, what was the purpose of this petition? What, what is it you're really trying to create? What is the purposes of making it a landmark? And what are the benefits? I can tell you from our research, and please, I appreciate the efforts that you put in, but, but, but there were some comments made that were really not correct. And let me see if I can shed some light on those. First of all, there is no benefit in making it a landmark, in spite of what Mr. Arth just said, there is no benefit. As was pointed out by Blake, who did extensive research on this, is it's in the landmark, it's, it's, it's in the district. However, there is a tremendous benefit in making it an historical point of interest. You would gain all the benefits that they're claiming for making it a landmark, but you would get further benefits. Benefits that, that you could put a placate on the freeway, that would encourage people to come off the freeway, and come through this amazing town that we live in, and give business to our business owners, who desperately could benefit from that business, the tourism coming through. There could, and that's easy, and I'm 100% in favor of that. There's, I am also 100% in favor of working with the city. Please, you made a very, very good comment. Sit down with us. We are so open to working with everybody. Blake has been absolutely amazing. Every time I've called him, he's immediately called back, and he's been open to every single meeting. I've never met a city manager who's gone so far out of his way to be so helpful. And he's said in every meeting, I want to be fair, and I want to follow the laws. So do we. And we want to work with the community. No one has ever asked, what do we want to do with the theater? When I asked him, why do you want the theater? Not once did he give me an answer, or what they had proposed to do by opening it. Simply, his answer was, we want to get it open. For what? The comment that was made that I haven't opened it for 20 years? That's totally false. It's been open all the time. We have events there all the, often. They're private events, because it's not supported. When we opened it up to the public, we offered movies for $2. On a good night, we would get 10 people to show up. We make $20. It costs us $200 every time we open the doors. I think you could do the math and recognize that is not a good business proposition. However, I'm willing to support that, as a community service, to do something good for the community. Rarely, I don't think I've ever turned down anybody who's come to me with legitimate reason to open the theater, to do something good in the community. An example at point is this Friday, we're opening it up for RER days. I'm really excited. We're giving it for free. I want to support, this is what this town is about, is RER. I want to support that in every way. We want to see it in a good use. There are many very viable uses for this theater, that would help and benefit the entire community in a very powerful way. And these are the things that we want to do. But I have no support whatsoever from people. Tim Holtz, who created Dunsmere Live, has nothing in there. Has he ever come to me and said, I want to help, I want to do things? That is completely, it seems absolutely to the case of almost absurdity. No, you cannot, it's my...
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Can I clarify one thing?
No, Tim, let Mark finish.
No.
When he's finished, I want to clarify...
That's fine.
Tim, you're out of order.
The, the main, the reason that I'm allowing Mark to go past the three minutes is because I'm hoping that his, his presentation will answer a lot of the questions that the planning commission have. So I want, I want Mark to finish, and then we'll call out more public comment.
And I want to come, I want to work with the planning commission. The way things get created are people sitting down. I am so in love with this city, and I'm so impressed, as we're attempting to get things open, people sitting down and saying, you know, this is what's required by code. I'm like, how do I do this? Well, let me give you some suggestions. And those suggestions are amazing. That's working together for the good of the community. That's the magic of working, of living in a small town like this, where we have the ability to sit down with the city manager, and literally come up with fantastic solutions. That's what we want to do. This theater represents many things. It's not just an incredible building with incredible architecture. It's a building that represents community coming together to do extraordinary things. And that's why I bought the theater. And we've had endless numbers of meetings in the last several months, of people that want to come and do incredible events in that theater. Amazing. We wanted to start a mystery school. I rented in February 2019 to the Masons, the Masonic Hall. Unfortunately, it was on the eve of COVID, and that got delayed. They came back, and I'm now again in discussions with two Masonic groups that would like to continue. The problem is they have no money. So I made a proposal to them. I'll give it to you for free. Would you be willing to teach some classes in, in, I want to open a mystery school. So when it's not being used as a Masonic Lodge, which is only, takes place one day a month, could we, would you be interested in teaching some classes in, in, in a mystery school? When I put out the idea of doing a mystery school, I have such incredible now long list of people that would love to be able to teach there, and the courses they want to teach are just extraordinary. We are one of the most amazing places on the planet, and there's only, there's only a small number of mystery schools, and we would be one of the top. This is what we're really, that's just one use of one small part of the theater. There's so many other uses. We bought it for the purposes of bringing community together, not getting into fights with people, not being accused of things. They're so wrong. It's, it's really unfortunate. And I thank you so much for allowing me to go over and to really speak. I am totally open, and I encourage any of you, all of you, please, my door is always open. I will sit down with anybody, and talk to them, and collaborate, and come up with suggestions we can do. Carol, I so much appreciate what you just said. You're absolutely right. One of the things we want to teach in the theater is the making of America, how our Constitution was being created. And when you start taking property away from individuals, private property, you are destroying the freedom of everybody. The reason the United States is so powerful, there's a book called The 5, The 5,000 Year Leap.
The speaker's about nine minutes, maybe we could, maybe you could wrap it up, I think this is kind of...
There's a book called The 5,000 Year Leap, which is about how the United States has, has, because I'm...
Is it relevant to the topic?
Oh, about, please, I let you speak. The, about innovation. And the reason innovation is so powerful in the United States is because of private ownership, because we have the, we get rewarded for contributing powerful ideas to the world. Don't take that away. Don't take away our, our constitutional rights of mine, or anybody else in this community. That's wrong.
All right, thank you, Mark.
Mr. Chairman, I want to respectfully, carefully clarify one important point here. And that is, the meeting that Mr. Juarez was referring to, where he said something about not being invited and heard about at the last minute, I can show you, I'll be happy to do that, a program, which we printed and sent out to about 100 people, in which there were five speakers, one of which was Mark Juarez, in which he was invited to speak by one of our members of Dunsmere Live. So I, we just must be living in separate realities, because he was very much invited, he did speak in fact, at that meeting, by, by our invitation.
Oh, correct? Did I just say... Hold on, hold on. Hold on, all right, hold on. I, I'm not sure that whether Mark was invited or not is going to be pertinent to what we have... Yeah, I understand, so, I understand. I, I don't, I don't think that's pertinent, so...
I agree with you, Chairperson Craig.
Do we have someone else that wants to make public comment? Or speak at our public hearing?
I have one more minute.
I think we can give Peter one minute. I think you have Peter one minute.
I hope you don't dismiss the importance of this to the citizens of our community. And the reason we're all here tonight is because, yes, the $500 was not increased. And I'm not speaking as a member of the city council. I'm speaking as a resident of the historic district and the owner of buildings right next to some of Mr. Juarez's buildings that are full of tenants and well painted. A private citizen wrote a personal check to the city of Dunsmere so we could have this meeting tonight. And there are any number of citizens, some wealthy, some not, that would like to see the theater repurposed and reopened. My offer as a private citizen to the community and the planning commission and the city is to have a four-hour facilitated workshop. Chrissy will be a member of the workshop. Mark Juarez will be a member of the workshop. A representative of Dunsmere Live will be a member of the workshop. A well-meaning citizen, you and the mayor can pick number four. Everybody seems to agree on the same outcomes, and yet the dream we just heard Mark explain was explained in 2012 when he bought the hotel. Something has to happen, and the theater needs to be preserved. Thank you.
One minute. We've got to wrap this up.
Craig, could you tell me how many people are in the audience?
Six, maybe about 10.
Okay, thank you.
Eight, eight, sorry, eight.
Can you start the clock over? I just want to make a comment. Amazing, this, this man is an incredible attorney. He can take something and make you, convince you of anything. The blade sign, it would have been lit up. I had it sold to the, to the San Jose Theater. They paid one, they offered to pay $100,000 for it. We found a company that would make a sign precisely, exactly, the California Theater in San Jose did a complete architect, a complete blueprint of it. They would make it exactly what was there, but it would be made out of aluminum with LED lights, and it would be lit up. It's not now stopped. There's the same on the marquee. The marquee was hit by a truck. It cost $52,000 to get fixed. However, it cost $154,000 to fix it because of roadblocks being placed. Not to mention, there's $70,000 in, in an attorney's fees. You say I don't do anything with the building? Stop any roadblocks, I mean, you'll see things get done.
Okay. I think we're done with the public hearing. What is the public hearing? So Blake, I'm going to turn this over to you as to what the planning commission, because I think I asked the question before, what are we doing?
Excellent question. So you can either amend or approve or disapprove the recommendation of the historic delegates regarding the status of the theater as a landmark designation. So you've already heard that report at last meeting. So after hearing this public hearing, you can now, for now, you can suggest to go to council, you can send this back to the city council to say, after planning commission review, we have approved the historic district delegate recommendation, and the theater qualifies as a landmark designation. From there, city council can decide what they would like to do, which you guys would be done with your part. You can either say, no, we actually do not agree with the historic district delegation recommendation, and therefore not approve it and have it not go to city council. Or you can say, city council, we're referring this back to you. We couldn't make a determination at this point, but, you know, anything along those lines.
So at this point, it sounds like we're looking for a motion.
No discussion at first.
So you can, you can discuss more. I did want to make a couple of points. I know I've heard from, from Chrissy and a few about, well, I just want to make two points. So the city in no way can take away property. Aside from certain eminent domain type things like that, there's definite procedures that need to go along with all these things. But designation of a landmark is no way taking a property away. The, whether it is a landmark or within the historic district, both of those designations, the adherence of 17.28 still applies. So 17.28.100, there's a procedure to authorize construction, demolition, relocation, or material change on a designated landmark. So I wanted to point that out because anytime something within the historic district does have to have some kind of alteration, it will come to this body to decide.
And that includes demolition?
That includes demolition.
I'd like to make a motion, Craig, for, sorry, for us to just consider to be able to have something to kind of respond against.
Chrissy, Chrissy, before we make a motion, you know, like, there's all these motions here. Can we make several motions?
I would amend, I would amend, I would amend it.
I'm, I'm just saying that, I mean, because I would like to make the motion that is suggested, suggested here, that we refer this back-
Real quick, real quick, hold on, there was, one of the planning commission members did state that they would like to make a motion, so we should hear that motion first. That's the, and Roberts rules, you know.
Thank you. Can we hear them all is what I want to say here.
Of course, there, there could be definitely qualifying questions and stuff, but of course, also up to the chair's discretion.
So Chrissy, go ahead and make your motion.
Okay. I motion that we approve the historic district delegates recommendation and submit that determination to the city council and refer this item back to the city council for further clarification on who is applying for the landmark designation. Is that possible to have both of those?
You can make it any way you want.
That's right.
You can make it any way you want.
So, so just to kind of clarify, and we can change the, the language, but I, I would like to know if the city council is willing to sponsor this designation. I think that the final onus should lay with them because it is such a hot topic and maybe let them decide how to handle it. But I think that if we're just sticking to the criteria, and as several have mentioned, the, the main point of this was to decide whether or not the building qualifies. And it, and, and I've already, you know, made that finding, and so that's why I'm proposing that we go ahead and approve the historic district delegates recommendation.
Question on-
Thank you.
Question on the motion. The motion is to approve the historic delegates recommendation. Are we approving that? We're not approving it to be a historic landmark. We're just, we're just saying that the findings are, are accurate.
The findings are accurate.
Do we restate that?
Correct, correct, all the, yeah, so, so 17.28 something or other E. After receiving a recommendation from the historic district delegates, the planning commission shall hold a public hearing at the earliest next regular meeting, consistent with general preparation, and then give notice. And then from there, the planning commission may approve, disapprove, or modify a recommendation of the historic district delegates on a designation.
I'm not clear on Chrissy's motion, where we are not, we are not approving it as a landmark, correct?
We're, I, I want to, and maybe someone can help me with the language here, but I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the recommendation for historic designation.
So you, we, we are-
Be considered by the city council, should they be willing to support this designation.
So if there's further, further clarification-
Maybe Blake can help me with that.
Yeah, yeah, I can definitely help out. But so just for further clarification, right, so landmark designation procedure is the designation of a landmark can be proposed by planning commission, city council, or by application of the owner or authorized agent. Okay, once you get a proposal from somewhere, which potentially this proposal came from a private entity, so that's where some clarification needs to happen. Then after that, the proposal shall be filed with the planning commission according to the certain things, assessor's partial number and so forth, which you guys have received, and which Chrissy did an amazing job on her assessment after receiving that proposal. So it, it, it does beg the determination to see where is this proposal coming from? Is it coming from Dunsmere Live? Is it coming from city council? That's where I'd like to see some clarification, and that's just me throwing that out there.
So if that's what we need is clarification, why don't we make the motion to refer this item back to the city council for further classification on who is applying or proposing landmark designation? I think that's a good motion.
So, so again, so the motion at hand then for, for Chrissy's motion, because there is within the ordinance for the planning commission to determine and do the procedures that you guys have already done. So if, if Chrissy wants to make the motion as I hear it, it would be approve historic district delegates recommendation and submit that determination to city council and refer back to city council for further clarification on who is applying slash proposing landmark designation. So that's how I read the deter-
Thank you.
If you read it that way, I really want clarification. If you're reading it that way, are, is the city planning commission approving this landmark?
Designation, though.
Designation. Are we approving it when we, when, if we agreed to that motion? Can you tell me that?
You would be agreeing, you would approve the historic district delegate recommendation, which we'd have to really dive into, what is that recommendation of the delegates? And at this point, it's my understanding that Chrissy and Craig determined that there was sufficient material to have the theater designated a landmark.
One of the problems-
Which further, it clearly does because it's already within a historic district. So it's, it's clear that it, that landmark status applies because it's already within a historic district, which all the municipal codes apply to either historic district or a landmark. So the further, going back, another, started to throw this in there, but a landmark designation was originally designed for a, a parcel that is not within a set of other parcels that wishes to become a historic district.
One of the problems I'm having right now, if I can speak for a minute, one of the problems I'm having right now on her motion, basically, okay, and the determination, I never printed out that. I was reading that online, that staff report that you had, Christie, and I didn't ever receive a copy of that. I remember in the original staff report, and I brought this up before, that it indicated that we were going to get that information prior to. Apparently Chrissy got the information, but I never received a hard copy of that. So now we're discussing how to modify that if there is there. I'm not prepared to do it without a hard copy or ability to get back online here and try to read it. So I'm a little bit muffed on that, but, so I don't know, I, I'm willing to go along with Chrissy's recommendation because I think it was fairly accurate. I think that she used a lot of the language that our historian and the, and Tim Holtz and the group wrote up as their presentation to the city council meeting, and I wasn't there. So I think it's pretty accurate information because it was put down. But again, to modify that, I would have a hard time modifying. That's why earlier I asked about what we were modifying and how we could modify it. So I don't know if I'm extremely comfortable at this point.
I don't think we're modifying-
Yeah, if we're not going to modify it, then again, I'd-
I don't think there's a proposal on the table to modify it.
Yeah.
The motion was to approve.
To approve, right.
Yeah.
My, the only question I have is, in the motion, Chrissy, are we stating that we approve or recommending approval of making this a historic landmark? Or are we approving that the California Theater qualifies as a historic landmark? There's a big difference there. So what do we, what do we tell in the city council? That we support the approval of it becoming a landmark? Or are we just telling the city council, yeah, it qualifies?
Good question. Yeah, that is a good question.
So potentially it could be-
Blake, can you help again?
Yeah, so-
Help us with what were we asked to do?
Yeah, so in, in reading the municipal code, right, so it talks about that approval, so the historic district delegates or the planning commission approval or modified approval of the application is consistent with the purposes and criteria of this chapter. So it seems very, if we want to take it at its baseline level, in my mind, the landmark status of the theater is very easy to be determined, as is, it's already within the historic district. Ergo, it qualifies as landmark status. Those are, those are the same exact things, same procedures, or very similar procedures, both of those things. And both, and everything within 17.28 applies to both of those things. So to make your job is very easy, you could consider planning commission, it's clearly a landmark status, as in it's already within the historic district. So city council, that is our recommendation. But the motion at hand is to approve historic district delegates recommendation. So that's where I think the question comes in that Craig proposed, exactly what is that recommendation?
Blake, could you say that first part again? You, you said the first part, there was another motion before the approval of it, that we could, I missed it.
I was just saying that the current motion at hand is to approve historic district delegate recommendation. Maybe the very, very first part, when I first started off, was that the historic district delegates were supposed to look at and, I guess, determine if the application, right, I'm using the words from the code, the application is consistent with the purpose and criteria of this chapter, which this chapter being 17.28, historic preservation. The application being, that's potentially what's up in the air of where is this application? Is it through Dunsmere Live? They are not the authorized agent, so we, we have determined that. So, but the Dunsmere Live application went to city council, city council saw, or went to the historic delegates, historic delegates saw it, and depending on how the wording was at last meeting, was to, yes, it satisfies the purpose and criteria of historic preservation.
So we could say, we could have a motion saying that it qualifies for that status without approving it. Correct?
Well, if you, if you want to break it down, Carol, the other part, besides what are we approving, is the historic delegates recommendation. I'm, even though, I mean, Chrissy did all the work, and I'm one of the historic delegates, I'm not sure what we recommended out of that thing. I thought we were just saying that it qualified as a qualifying.
That's it.
I, I, I don't think I was saying, yeah, we should make this a historic landmark. I was just saying, based on Chrissy's extensive research-
It qualifies.
Qualified.
Yes.
So that brings me to my first question. What are we approving? We, are we approving that it qualifies? Or are we approving that we should make it a historic landmark?
I, I think we should say that it qualifies.
But we have a motion about that.
Right, so you-
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out how to, I think the, the sticking point, as everyone is pointing out, is the recommendation. And I think it would be good to get a poll or figure out who actually would recommend versus who would not versus who is on the fence, so that we can maybe have some discussion about that because I don't think it's worth going back and forth on this. If we're going to say, yeah, we agree with the findings, and then you figure it out, city council, well, let's just, I mean, if we all know where we land on the recommendation, then I think we should maybe have that discussion now and then decide, you know, what the language of the motion should be amended to and then make, or keep it as is and move forward. But it could be, it could be that we say, you know, per planning commission review and finding, or something to the effect that we, we under, or we find that the application is consistent with blah, blah, blah. We find that-
That it qualifies.
Yes, that it qualifies. And therefore, we recommend that the city council consider, or, you know, whatever language we- language we want to use, um, uh, approving the historic district designation, um, pending clarification on who is applying. Something to that effect could be a motion if, you know, I guess that's something we could discuss.
Well, I'm not willing to agree to the last couple of words saying that we have approved it.
But we do have.
I think we know where you lay, Carol.
Okay, we do have.
I'm curious what other people are thinking.
Go ahead, go ahead.
We have a motion. So unless you amend the motion, we have a motion.
I'd like to amend the motion.
I hear ya, okay.
Well, then you, that, I think, Carol, what you would be doing is making a second motion.
May I amend the motion?
What?
Yeah. Carol, I think you would be making a second motion. You can't amend, you can't amend Chrissy's motion.
I didn't know we could make other motions. I didn't know we could keep going.
So Carol has a motion.
Well, no, I think Chrissy did want to amend, but.
But with discussion, I don't know.
I can work on my amendment while Carol is making her motion.
All right.
I, 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 I make, I make a motion that um, I'm not sure what the exact language that, uh, we say that it qualifies for landmark status without approving the designation or even the recommendation, that it qualifies. And send it back to the city council and let them, with the budget, with whatever they have to do, take it from there. That it does qualify. But I don't approve the recommendation to make it a landmark status. So I don't know how to word that, but it does qualify.
Would your, would your motion be that you motioned that the planning commission finds that the California Theater qualifies as a historic landmark and makes no further recommendation? So is that your motion?
Yes, uh, if I wanted to add something to it, I would say uh that uh, sending it back to the ci- uh, city council for clarification, that we don't, that we recognize that it qualifies and that we send it back to the city council for clarification on what they think they'd like to do.
So my only, my only thought is if we send it back to the city council for clarification, are we asking the city council to give it back to us?
Yeah, yeah, forget it.
I don't want it back.
Yeah, just say, just say, we, we, I, I make a motion that uh, that the land, that the theater qualifies for landmark status. That's the motion.
With, with, with no further recommendation or just period?
What do you think, Craig?
I know what I would vote for, depending on the wording, but.
Yeah.
I mean, it almost sounds like we're supposed to be, in, in the first motion, we're approving the historic district delegates recommendation. And I think all that we did in the recommendation from the historic delegates is show that it qualified as a historic landmark. I don't think that we were recommending it become a, a historic landmark.
Is that, is that, is that the, is that?
If I understand what happened there correctly.
And so we don't understand correctly, so that's why I'm clarifying it to be.
No, no, I like, I like, I like the way you worded your motion, yes.
Uh, you know, so, so the word.
Hold on, Carol.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Wendy.
I just want to jump in and, and just reiterate that um, per Rico staff report, this has to go back um to the council for final action.
So we don't have to say anything, we could just say it qualifies.
Right, you, you can agree with the historic district's um designation and then you can refer it back to city council and you can, um, you know, or you cannot refer it back to council.
Or Wendy, we can make a motion that it qualifies the landmark status and that's it.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah, you don't have to refer.
So, so item, item F, planning commission may approve, disapprove, or modify a recommendation of the historic district delegates on a designation.
So I just modified it.
Then G, prior to the approval of modified approval of a designation, planning commission shall make those findings specified and submit to city council. So that key and submit to city council for final action.
Um, I'm not quite understanding that, Blake.
Planning commission may approve.
Hold on, hold on.
Planning commission may approve, disapprove, or modify a recommendation of historic district delegates on a designation. Then, take that status, whatever that is, and submit that to city council for final action.
So we still could say it qualifies landmark status and it goes back to them. That's what I get. Correct?
But I think the question is, did you, did the commission, does the commission support the historic, historic delegate findings that this building qualifies for historic designation? So that's one, question one, yeah? And it's so.
Yeah.
It's not clear to me, Chrissy, what you're, what, 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 what you just said about uh.
Carol, what, Carol, what she just, what she just said is what your motion is.
I hope so.
That's what Chrissy just said, that was the first part.
I'm hoping to city council.
It, that it, that, uh, that we as a planning commission say qualifies as a landmark. After that, I'm not sure uh what to say or not to say. I just believe that it does qualify for a landmark, therefore Chrissy's um investigation.
Well.
But I, I don't know about.
I'd like to modify my, I'd like to modify my motion. Let me see if this will.
Okay.
I motion, I motion the planning commission affirm the findings of the historic delegate that the California Theater qualifies for landmark status and the city council further clarify who is applying for landmark designation.
And why do we have to add that? Why do we have to add that for clarification?
Because that, that suggested motion, that suggested motion by the, I mean, it does need to get clarified.
Well, uh, I, I, I.
So it would just clear, it would just.
So then, then, then the uh clarification would come back to us and then we would have to vote on it again. That's what I'm worried about. So I, I think.
Well, it's gonna have to get, it's gonna have to get addressed either way, right? I mean, whether.
Well, then let them, let it be addressed.
Hopefully they don't kick it back to us. Hopefully they watch this and they.
What I'm saying is, I can totally agree that that theater qualifies for landmark status. Anything after that, I, I don't see, um, I don't see it for me.
So Carol, so Carol, your motion, approve the historic district delegates recommendation that the California Theater qualifies as a historic landmark.
Period. Period, that's it.
That's Carol's motion.
I thought that was Tom Moore's note, that was Tom Moore's motion, wasn't it?
What's that now?
Wasn't that Chrissy's motion?
My motion.
Chrissy, I have a question.
No, she, Chrissy has more to her motion.
Oh, I see what you're saying, got it. Uh, someone had a question about my motion.
Yeah, I had a question. I finally found your, your report, Chrissy. And it has thirteen, thirteen sections on it, twelve of which are considered questions. Number thirteen says, the collective value of the historic district taken together may be of greater value than the individual structure. Obviously not a question, but a consideration, but a consider to city code. Can you explain that?
But it wasn't a question that I had to answer.
It's obviously not a question, but a consideration per city code, that it would be.
Well, I think you would, you would.
It seems like, it seems like that's a recommendation.
You would like to comment on that, I don't have a comment on that.
Okay, okay. Okay. So Carol has a very clear motion.
Sorry, I don't have a comment on that.
Yeah.
My motion.
Carol has.
Carol, could we, could we hear Carol's comment or, could we hear Carol's motion one more time?
I make a motion. That the city planning, the city planning commissioners, uh, that, that, I make a motion that the theater, whatever, how legally qualifies, qualifies for uh landmark status. That's, that's what I make recommendations for and nothing else. That it qualifies for that.
So in other words, approve historic, approve historic, hold on, approve historic district delegates recommendation that the California Theater qualifies as a historic landmark, period. That's Carol's motion?
If, if, if uh we're talking about uh Chrissy's whole report, I'm not recommending the whole report. I am recommending that it just qualifies. So I don't know.
So you want, so you want to take out the historic, the historic.
Delegate, yeah, we don't even.
Delegate's recommendation.
I know Chrissy did a great job. I know, I, I know she researched and everything like that. Um, but if we're going to approve the whole recommendation, the whole pages of what she had in, in there, I'm not in favor of that. I'm in favor of uh saying that it qualifies for landmark.
Okay, I understand, I just want, I just wanted to clarify your motion.
I'm, I'm just not sure about the, going for the whole recommendation.
Okay, we got your motion there, Chrissy.
Okay.
Chrissy, do you have, uh, you want to just state your motion one more time?
Yeah, give me a second.
I can repeat what I captured, Chrissy, if that helps.
Okay, well, uh, Wendy can repeat it.
She want me to?
You.
Yeah, uh, go ahead, go ahead, Wendy, thank you.
I s- I got a, Tom Moore makes a motion to approve historic district delegates recommendation regarding landmark status of the California Theater and submit it to city council um to decide on who is the applicant.
Refer back to city council.
Refer back to city council. This will die if it doesn't, it has to be sent back to city council for final action. If it's not, if it doesn't get sent back to city council, it will just crash out.
So, so can we say, uh, we make a motion that it qualifies and that we sent, refer it back to the city council?
Yes.
Would that do it?
Okay, so one thing at a time. So Carol, you want to amend yours to add, add, and send it back to city council?
And to refer it back to city.
Refer back to city council.
Just refer it, just plain, refer it back to city council.
And can we put on there, don't give it back to us? No, I'm just kidding. Okay, so Wendy, you have Carol's motion, right?
Okay, so do you want me to also add and determine, have city council determine who the applicant is?
That wasn't part of Carol's motion.
No.
Just refer it back.
Just refer it back, yeah. Cause you said otherwise it counts.
And we refer it back.
Okay. And then, and then Wendy stated Chrissy's motion.
Um, do you want me to repeat it?
I, I, I was wondering if Chrissy.
So Chr- the only difference that I saw in Chrissy's is that she wants um council to determine who the applicant is, is that right, Chrissy?
Yeah, and that was just based on the suggested motion from the city manager.
Okay, so normally we just vote on the first motion, then vote on the second motion, or how does that work?
Well, technically you would try to go to the first motion first, and if it gets a second, uh, then you would do a roll call vote or a vote. If it, there is no second received, then you'd go to the next motion.
So I can't have my motion.
First motion, second motion, die?
So you should, you should take a motion, like the first motion, if it receives a second, but you can, you can also try and determine maybe which motion should go first.
See, cause it's not fair, just because someone spoke first, you know, we both have motions that we like.
Tom Moore's motion was the first motion.
I'm gonna rescind my motion and let Carol have her motion.
That is an option, but it doesn't have to be.
You're so good to me, Chrissy, you really are, and I, I really appreciate everything that you've done.
You owe me one.
I know, okay.
So, hold on, okay, so Chrissy has rescinded her motion, which leaves Carol's motion on the floor. Do we have a second for Carol's motion?
Can I hear it one more time?
There's nobody seconding?
Hold on, yeah, no, so.
I would like to hear the motion one more time.
Chrissy wants to hear it one more time. So the way I read it is approve that the California Theater qualifies as a historic landmark and.
Qualifies for historic landmark status.
Status and refer it back to the city council.
Correct.
I'll, I'll second it.
Somebody can redo Chrissy's motion if, if anybody feels so pertained. We don't want to dismiss any motions.
No, I, I don't want to dismiss it either, I've just had another slant on it.
I think it's just, it's so long as city council reads the notes from this meeting, they'll get the point that they need.
Yeah.
They'll get the point of absolute confusion.
So I'll second Carol's, Carol's motion.
All right, Carol made a motion, Michael second it, um, we need a roll call vote. Carol?
I.
Chrissy?
I.
Michael?
Hi.
Don?
Well, I don't know if I'm gonna abstain from this or not, because I don't know who's applying or proposing it still.
Okay. You can abstain.
All right, so are you?
What?
Don, have you read the minutes of the last city council member?
I don't have all the facts.
Is he abstaining?
So, so you abstaining?
Yeah, so I'm abstaining.
Okay. Dwight?
I'll, I'll go along with the motion as presented, but I also want Don to know that possibly you should read the last city council meeting to find out where, what their, what their feelings are. Their feelings were pretty intense. I think the feelings are still pretty intense, so I would hate to see. I don't think we've done a good job of presenting it to them, but I'll go along with the motion,
I'm not sure how we could have done a better job. Now we have, so, okay, so this, so this, oh.
Did you vote, Craig?
No, I didn't. I'm gonna vote no, but the motion passes. And that's it? Any old business, none, no new business? Any more announcements on anything else? Blake says no. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
I have some question. Um, well, we're already adjourned, Mark. It's officially over.
Second.
I second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.